Quiet, please. Good afternoon. Now, welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Finance. At this time, please silent all electronic devices. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Good morning or good afternoon. Welcome to today's Finance Committee hearing. I'm Councilmember Justin Brennan. I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Finance. We've been joined today Councilmembers Osay, Hudson, Hanks, Powers, Barron, Juan, and Carr, and Councilmember Moya on Zoom. Today, the committee will be holding a hearing on four pieces of legislation, three introductions and one resolution, all sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers. Intro 498 would require the Department of Finance to report on the city's use of depository financial services. Intro 499A would require the Office of Management and Budget to report on the city's use of non-depository financial services. Intro 999 would establish a task force to study options and make recommendations for a plan to implement a municipal bank, a municipal public bank. And Rezo 203A would call for the passage of pending state legislation, which would authorize the establishment of a public bank in New York. Over the course of FY '22, the city took in more than $122 billion in receipts by way of taxes, government grants, municipal bond sales, and other sources. Contrary to some belief, the city doesn't actually spend it as soon as they get it. The city stores its revenue in a series of bank accounts, along with short-term investment options, until necessary to meet payroll and other expenses. In the current economic climate, we need to be especially mindful of every aspect of our city's finances, and that includes where we bank. This is even more true now after two historic bank closures, including one here in New York, have raised questions and concerns about safeguards in the banking sector. For example, at the time Signature Bank failed and entered federal receivership, it was public information that Signature Bank was an approved depository of the city's Banking Commission, but it was not public whether Signature Bank held city's deposits at that time. The goal of these bills today in this hearing is not to doubt the public servants who operate the city treasury and ensure both the availability and a return on our revenue, but to gain transparency and oversight in these processes. The recent bank closures... Can we just have quiet in here, please? The recent bank closures have also called attention to a competing banking model advanced by both advocates and members of the state legislature in Albany, that the city should have the authority to charter a publicly-owned bank to receive city revenue and lend out excess funds in support of city's social policies as well as to gain return on investment. Such a bank has been in operation by the state of North Dakota for over 100 years, making loans at subsidized rates to local financial institutions and student loans for attendance at North Dakota colleges. Whether this model can scale up to meet the banking services needs of New York City remains an open question, but one better answered after learning more about how those needs are met. Before we turn to our witness testimony, I want to recognize the Majority Leader, who is the sponsor of the bills we're hearing today, Councilmember Powers, for remarks on his bills.
Thank you, and I want to thank Chair Brennan for holding the hearing today, and I want to thank the sponsors of this bill, including Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine, who had previously sponsored these bills in the last session, and, of course, the Public Bank Coalition for their advocacy on this issue as well. We have four bills here today relate to increased transparency about New York City's finances and lay the groundwork for a municipal public bank. We're here to take, to talk about a new idea for New York City, a municipal public bank that puts public dollars to work for our communities. For those who aren't familiar, a public bank is a financial institution owned and operated by a public entity, in this case, the New York City, and accountable more directly to New Yorkers. Public banks present an alternative to traditional banks and can serve as a powerful tool for local governments to invest in our communities. This hearing is particularly timely, as everyone, I hope, filed their taxes yesterday, and if you didn't, I hope you got an extension. Every year, the New York City, every year, oh, you forget, Camilla, every year, New York City collects tens of billions of dollars of revenue to fund programs and service our capital needs, and we will hear, most of this money is placed in deposit with traditional banking institutions located, many located here, right here in New York City. With the public bank, we have the opportunity to fill gaps in our banking system by providing high-quality, affordable financial services to unbanked and underbanked communities, to support community-based credit unions, loan funds, and small businesses. Imagine if even a portion of the money of the city's deposits in private banks was reinvested in neighborhood-led development, permanently affordable housing, living wage jobs, and renewable energy. With a public bank, that is possible, and tax dollars can be invested even more for the public good. The legislation we're hearing today will help shine a light on our city's current financial investments and lay the groundwork for the creation of a public bank in New York City. We, of course, also are calling on our colleagues in Albany to take the step to actually grant and authorize that. The Chair listed out the bills, so I won't repeat what they do, but I'm certainly looking forward to hearing the Admin's testimony here today and hearing from the public about ways that we can move forward with this and how we can do it successfully. This will bring us one step closer to transparency and accountability and help us create an economy that supports working in middle-class New Yorkers. I want to thank the committee staff, my fellow committees, for hearing this legislation today, fellow bill sponsors, and the advocates for their support. I want to thank Haley and Ben in my office for working diligently on this, and look forward to hearing testimony today and moving this legislation forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Powers. Now, we're going to turn to Committee Counsel, Mike Toomey, to swear in our witnesses.
Good afternoon. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and that you will honestly and faithfully answer Councilmember questions? Mary Christine Jackman? Wa Tan? Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan, and the members of the Finance Committee. My name is Mary Christine Jackman, and I am the city's treasurer at the New York City Department of Finance. I am joined today by my colleague, Wa Tan, the Director of Banking Relations and Services. We are here to discuss the legislation in relation to the city's treasury. First, I'd like to give a brief overview of the current New York City banking process. New York state law requires all municipal bank deposits to be fully collateralized. The New York City Banking Commission, staffed by DOF's Treasury, requires that city deposits are protected by being placed only in designated financially-secure banks. The city's procurement process promotes competition among designated banks endeavoring to provide financial products and services to the city to ensure reduced costs and ensure that appropriate products and services are selected. Treasury staff monitors the billing and administration of all city bank accounts. The Controller's Office approves the opening of the city bank accounts. Regarding the legislation under discussion at today's hearing, my testimony will focus primarily on Intro 498. The Office of Management and Budget has submitted written testimony addressing Intro 499. And while we are willing and eager to participate in any task force created in the future, Intro 999 is reliant on the state legislation that has not yet been passed. Intro 498, introduced by Councilmember Powers, would require DOF to make quarterly reports regarding the city bank accounts of deposit, disaggregated by account, and re-aggregated by bank or trust company. We are largely supportive of the legislation and would work with council to ensure that the bill achieves increased transparency and usable data sharing. When considering reporting requirements, it is relevant to discuss two major types of bank accounts that the city employs. There are many accounts for which the city has fiduciary responsibility, but not ownership. These accounts are held under the city's taxpayer ID, but are not technically or legally city funds. Examples of fiduciary accounts are the Controller's custody accounts or the HPD escrow accounts. The other type of overarching account is what we refer to as working accounts, which have money moving through them constantly. These daily fluctuations complicate reporting and result in overstated average balances that would not be available to be invested or otherwise used. Let's use last Friday, April 14th, as an example. The city of New York had payroll disbursements of $785 million. That money went into the bank account in the morning and was cleared out by the end of day. It was probably cleared out before 11:00 a.m. Each quarter, there is an average of six pay periods with comparable amounts moving through these accounts. This makes the average balance of the payroll account look higher, but the truth is, is that the money is moving through the account, not sitting idly. The Treasury Division works diligently to make sure money is not inactive. Every morning, balances are verified, incoming money is accounted for, outgoing accounts are subtracted, and any residual amounts are invested by the Controller's Office until they are needed. These funds do not remain at the bank. Another example, some have expressed concern over the $60 million in city funds on deposit at Signature Bank the day it was taken over by federal and state regulators. However, almost $30 million of that total was for housing and preservation development participation loans, which helped multifamily building owners throughout the city to facilitate the moderate or substantial rehabilitation and affordability of housing for low-to-moderate income households. The remaining $30 million was for administration for children's services, payments to voucher childcare providers, which always leave the bank shortly after their deposit. Importantly, in both of these instances, at this point, the funds at Signature Bank were in use by the programs and not available for investment or other use. With respect to Signature Bank and to all of our depository banks, all city deposits were fully collateralized in accordance with state law. That means that Signature had on deposit secure assets protecting the entire value of the deposits. Because they were collateralized, the city's deposits were secure before the Federal Reserve, U.S. Treasury, and Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation acted to guarantee all deposits. The Department of Finance believes that it could support Intro 498 as long as a few minor changes are made, such as providing adequate time for implementation. Overall, this bill is something that we look forward to working with council. Intro 999, which was also introduced by Councilmember Powers, establishes a task force to study options and make recommendations for a plan to implement a municipal bank, a public bank. The Department of Finance will have to play a key role in this process if the state passes legislation giving the city authorization. We look forward to discussing this bill further with all relevant stakeholders and the challenges and complexities regarding public banking. For example, the two highest costs of a new bank are capitalization and compliance with federal and state regulations. The FDIC requires at least a three-year plan that demonstrates how startup costs and expected expenses and losses will be covered. This bill states that, quote, "There will be no material negative impact of the public bank on the city's financial condition," unquote. However, this may not be possible to guarantee, as even profitable banks regularly experience losses. As this new public bank would be geographically constrained to economic activity in New York City, its losses would be disproportionate in the event of an economic recession in our city. Should such losses occur, it may be necessary to allocate additional funding from the city budget to the bank during already challenging economic times. There are certainly reasons why the Bank of North Dakota is the only state-owned, state-run financial institution in the United States at this time. Incidentally, last year, North Dakota Bank, the only public bank in the United States, spent $33 million in banking expenses with a population of approximately 775,000 people. New York City, on the other hand, spent $24 million in banking fees with a population of almost 8.5 million. Finally, the Law Department is reviewing this proposed legislation and may raise additional concerns once the review has been completed. As always, I want to thank Chair Brennan, the legislation sponsors, and the members of this committee for taking time to hear my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this legislation.
Thank you so much. Quickly, we've been joined by members Lewis, Brewer, Stevens, Brooks, Powers, and Ayala. So, the city's cash flow moves on two separate tracks, right? DOF manages cash through depository services, and the Controller's Asset Management Bureau is responsible for managing investments and cash equivalents, right?
The, yes, the city, the DOF does do the deposits, that's correct, and Controller is responsible for the accounting for those transactions.
Okay. So, what is the rationale in holding some of the taxpayers' money in cash and some in cash-equivalent investments?
That's on the Controller's side. When, when, what we do is we try to clear out as much of the cash as possible every single day, and we turn it over to the Controller's Office for investment.
And what is the, what's the rationale there? Like, why wouldn't we keep more cash on hand versus, how do you decide to clear that out versus to keep it?
We don't, we try not to keep anything. The, the only money that would be left in the account would be to try and cover any, any transactions that come through during the night. So, so at the, as, by, before 11:00, we're turning over all of the residual cash to the Controller's Office.
And how does DOF and the Controller's Office coordinate while you're both working on separate tracks?
We're not really working on separate tracks. What we're, what we're doing is we're checking the daily cash management and daily cash flow, and then based on whatever that result is by 11:00, then they know how much cash they have to invest for the day.
Okay. And what's the rationale for having two separate offices handle this?
That was decided long before I ever got here and probably before anyone in this room did.
Right.
Probably not me.
Oh. [laughing]
Are there more cost-effective opportunities for the city to do more work in-house rather than contracting out to different financial institutions?
I don't know that the daily cash flow is contracted out. That's, that's done in the Controller's Office.
I'm just saying, well, not, just in general.
Um, I don't think there's that much contracted out.
But things like investment, you know, investment advisory, payroll, debt collection, lockbox, professional services, any professional services in connection with the issuance of municipal debt, do you think there's more that we could be doing in-house that we're currently not doing in-house?
That would, a lot of those things that you mentioned would be a Controller question, that would not be a Department of Finance question. And then, in addition to that, we do most things in-house.
How many depository bank accounts does the city currently have?
That's a great question, because, as I mentioned, there's two kinds of accounts. There's the working accounts, and there's the fiduciary accounts. There are approximately, give or take, because we're opening and closing accounts every day, there's 2,124 working accounts, and there's 2,267 fiduciary accounts.
And can you describe, I mean, not all of them, but can you describe their different purposes and functions?
Sure.
Now, why are there so many?
Oh, well, because, for instance, we have 1,624 schools. Each school has at least one account.
Okay, so that's included, that's included in your number, I guess.
Yeah, the larger schools have more than one account. So, so in those cases, there's, there's 1,700 of the working accounts already, right? For the fiduciary accounts, we, they use our tax ID, but we have the responsibility and the privilege and the duty of caring for these funds for others. So, for instance, like, there's tenant accounts, there's custody accounts, there's children's services accounts, there's all kinds of accounts that are opened, or there's also escrow accounts for the legal department. There's, these are all under a specific name or a specific person or a specific entity. So, there's individual accounts for each one of those, and those funds cannot be co-mingled. That's, that's part of the reason, that's part of the reason that we have so many bank accounts, is that the funds cannot be co-mingled.
Got it.
And particularly with the fiduciary accounts.
Now, can the agencies access these accounts directly, or it has to go through DOF?
All of the account openings and closings are supposed to go through DOF, and the openings are supposed to go through the Controller.
But what about accessing it once it's open?
It, each agency, well, it depends on the use of the account. Some of the accounts, there are designated people in the financial portion of the agency who are able to, to make payments or, or to do other things with their, with their accounts, but for the most part, all of those people have to be authorized through security administration.
Okay. And what kind of safeguards are in place to prohibit any improper use of, of the funds by the banks? Like, you know, unacceptably risky lending?
Well, the, um, all of our funds are collateralized. So, if, if anything goes wrong at the bank, we can immediately pull all of the collateralized money or the investments, whatever they pledged, whether they pledged a letter of credit or whether they pledged a government security or whatever they've pledged, we can have immediate access to that, and we can actually cash it in. So, that's, that's that protection. The other protections are that we have contracts with the banks, and they're held to a high standard with the contracts that we have with them. The banks also are regulated, that's one of the requirements, to use a bank is that it's got a federal or a state charter, and there's absolute regulation and oversight because of all of those organizations that are overlooking each one of the banks.
Can you tell us at present which of the approved banks have city funds deposited in them, and what are the amounts at each bank?
I can tell you the banks that have funds. I don't know at this moment because it shifts so much. As you know, the Banking Commission designated 28 banks. Of that, 15-ish have funds, and a couple of banks have Banking Development District deposits.
I think I want to hand it to the bill sponsor, and then I'll come back for more. Keith?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. I know the staggering amount of accounts that we have in the city, but your explanation helps make sense why. I guess the question is, how do agencies decide which are the approved banks to use for a deposit and the amounts of deposit in them if we have a wide range of public institutions that we're choosing from, or private institutions we're using from, rather?
The Banking Commission, every two years, requests applications from the banks who are interested in providing services or products to the city. Actually, this, this is one of the years that the applications have been sent to the Banking Commission to be analyzed. There's a very extensive application that is, all of the requirements are delineated in Title 22, and the banks have to comply with all of those points in, in Title 22. It's a very extensive process. As you know, the Banking Commission is made up of the mayor or his designee, the Controller or his designee, and the Finance Commissioner or his designee.
Got it, okay. And do you have an opinion on how well the existing banking institutions and arrangements are serving New York City?
How they're, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, do you have an opinion on how well the existing banking institutions and arrangements are serving the city?
I take great pride in the fact that I help negotiate those contracts, and I pay very close attention to make sure that every one of those banks is delivering the products and services that we have contracted with them for.
Okay, thank you. Do, in your opinion, what would the process look like for the city to develop a public bank if state legislation passed to authorize that? I know maybe you can't speak to every step, but certainly from your vantage point, what would be the process and what would be the biggest challenges?
I just made a quick list.
All right, let's hear it.
All right. First of all, define the parameters of the bank. Draft articles of incorporation. Figure out the sources of startup and long-term capital. Design a governance structure. Complete a formal assessment of market opportunities, but more importantly, market risks. A business plan is required to apply for a charter. A bank requires either a state or federal charter. At this time, neither one of those is legal for a municipality in New York. A bank requires many millions of dollars of startup capital. Using public funds requires extra due diligence because these are public funds, and losses are just a cost of doing bank business. Where will the losses be posted? Draw up plans for regulatory and legal compliance and attorneys to assist. Plan extensive cybersecurity. If we were to open a de novo bank, it will be targeted by national and international hackers. Make an application for Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation coverage. That, that application is like 50 pages long, just, just for reference. Apply for access to the Federal Reserve Bank Federal Payments System because we can't be, we won't be able to do anything without access to the payment system. We have something as mundane as trying to figure out where we're going to store the cash. As a municipality, a large volume of coins and paper money moves through New York City. It will have to be collected, but it will also have to be protected. How will New York City handle change requests for the banking centers? Those are just some of the, those are just some of the very basic things that need to be discussed and decided upon and figured out.
Great, thank you for that, thank you for that, thank you for that list. Question on reporting, what data, what data and information does the Department of Finance and OB currently report publicly? Our, for, this is for Intro 498 and 499, which require additional public disclosure. What information is reported? Where is it reported? And, well, those are my two questions.
Okay. At the current time, there are not requirements for the, for the public reporting. We report through the Division, of course, as to where things are, and of course, you know that the Controller produces the annual, the comprehensive annual financial report.
So, if I'm a member of the, I'm a taxpayer in New York City, and I want to know what our current arrangements are with banking institutions, is there a place to find that?
Comprehensive annual financial report.
Got it, from the city controller?
Yes.
Correct, okay, thanks. And then I'll, just ask a couple more questions, and I know we'll have to back. What factors does the Banking Commission consider when designating a bank?
It considers all kinds of things, but especially, we focus on their CRA rating, their financial stability, their equal-opportunity employment practices, their equal-opportunity employment lending, or equal-opportunity lending, and, and other community service or programs that they're supporting within our communities. or programs that they're supporting within our communities.
Okay. And then, how much, how much in fees and regulated costs does a city, does, does each of the city's current designated banks charge the city?
Each of those is negotiated, and because of our competitive procurement process, we get lower pricing than anything that they publish, and that's all unique to the contract.
So, for instance, in last fiscal, or last calendar year, do you know how much the city paid in terms of fees to banking institutions?
As I mentioned, while North Dakota paid thirty-three million, we only paid twenty-four million.
Right, right, got it. And how often does that procurement process take place? Or how often do it, well, maybe a different question, how often do we negotiate those rates and fees?
It depends on the contract, as soon as the contract's.
Okay, so then how often, what, what is it? Yeah, good.
I mean, that's, that's whenever, that's whenever the contract is negotiated, and then there's clauses in the contract for further negotiation or not, depending on the contract.
And what's the, what's the average procurement, what's the average procurement length, contract length?
Historically, it's been about three years with one-year renewal.
Got it. Say, say it one more time?
Historically, it's been three years.
Three years with a.
With another one or two-year renewal.
And at the end of that is another opportunity to renegotiate that rate, those?
It depends, usually, usually we go back out for RFP.
Got it, okay. And, I just want to get on the record, I think you said this ready, but with the collapse of Signature Bank, which held sixty million of the city's deposits, did that affect any of our, any financial standing for the city, and did it affect any of the city's policies and future plans regarding designation of banks?
It did not affect any of the city's financial status at all, because, as I mentioned, it was fully collateralized, and the money was absolutely in process in use. Did it affect anything? I think that the Banking Commission will add a few more measures to their investigation into the financial status of a bank going forward.
Okay, thank you. I may have more questions, but I think that's it for right now. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
The, the recent banking crisis in March re-exposed the fragility of the, the global banking system, and regulators traced the recent failures at Silicon Valley Bank to balance sheet management. How well situated are the city's partner banks to counter this type of interest rate risk that, that brought down these banks?
Councilmember, I, I really believe that absolutely everyone after March is paying closer attention to everything. I, that is, I mean, that's just what everybody's doing.
Okay, but is it, is it something that, is it something there'll be a particularly renewed focus on now, for the city?
The, the previous standard was that banks believed that if they had ten percent liquid and ninety percent available for investment or for use otherwise, that the ten percent was enough. In this particular case, in Silicon Valley Bank's case, forty-two billion dollars had moved out of the bank before nine AM California time. So, that was a lot more than ten percent. I think everyone is looking at and reevaluating the situation, because never before have you been, has anyone been able to move that much money without leaving their home. I mean, that, that money all moved electronically. So, the regulators, the FDIC, the Treasury, all of the above, everyone is looking a lot closer at what is a better number for liquidity for the banks.
And then, my, my last question, and then I want to turn it to my colleagues. So, the, the New York Community Bank, which is Flagstar's parent bank, that, that purchased Signature.
Yes.
And merged the, the required assets into what is now Flagstar. But the media is, is saying that New York Community Bank is also applying in its own name to be a designated bank?
Yes, this time they did apply.
Okay, so, does the, the city permit parent and subsidiary banks to each serve as a designated bank?
I don't know that we've had this situation before.
Okay, so there's no other parent banks and subsidiaries that are currently?
Not at this time.
Okay, and why would we do that?
Well, New York Community Bank is actually a BDD. They're, they're actually approved by the state Banking Development District Program, and so we do have a relationship with them because of the Banking Development District Program. And they were applying, I, I think mostly because of that. Flagstar Bank, as you know, just came into the, into the picture the nineteenth of March. So, that's, that's where Flagstar Bank is.
Okay. Does, does that arrangement pose any new potential exposure to the city's assets?
I don't know in this particular case, because I haven't examined their financial statements yet. But, in all cases, any deposits of the city would be fully collateralized at whichever bank. That, that would not be connected, and it would not be the same money. That would be totally collateralized, independent of each other.
Could you tell us what, what was, what was in the city's account as of last night?
Which account?
Overall, how much money did we have as of last night?
I think we had, no, I don't know that, I don't think. I know. I think we had about three hundred and five million dollars across all of the accounts.
And is that about average of what it typically is?
No, it fluctuates greatly, depending on what's going on with the fiduciary accounts.
So, when, when is it typically highest versus lowest?
Highest will be like Jan, July, when we get all the property taxes in.
Yep.
That's, that's when it's highest, and lowest is end of November, beginning of December.
Okay. Okay, I want to turn now to, and we've also been joined by Councilmember Williams. I want to turn now to, for questions, Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
First of all, I want to publicly state that I'm for public banking, and it doesn't appear that you're too fond of public banking, just from some of your comments. And I'll, you said, at, as this new public bank would be disproportionate in the event of this, will be geographically constrained to economic activity in New York City, its losses would be disproportionate in the event of an economic recession in our city. Should such a loss, losses occur, it may be necessary to allocate, allocate additional funding from the city budget to the bank during already challenging times, and this is why North Dakota may be the only public bank. First of all, public banking didn't, was, was, during the pre-colonial times, it was all about public banking. The private banking didn't come into existence until seventeen eighty-one, roughly, according to research. And secondly, I find it interesting that you're concerned about money coming from the city budget to help out a public bank in the event that it had problems. When these private banks are making money, they're capitalists, and when they start losing money, they become socialists, and they want the government to intervene, bail them out. They want the government to do things for them, and it's, that's a contradiction. So, you're concerned about using city money, but yet, these private banks, all of the city money that's being, you know, put into these private banks, and they're making mega bucks, they don't want to be regulated the way they ought to be regulated, they're usually against regulation, so they fight for deregulation, so they can maximize profits, they want a monopoly on the banking system, and you don't even want to strongly support a public bank, a public bank, and bring up, what, North Dakota, they spend thirty-three million, they only have seven hundred thousand people, and we would be spending twenty-four million on eight million people. Public banking, we have a right to have a strong public, because these private banks, when it comes to the black community, we were redlined, we had difficulty getting any loans, we got subprime loans, even though our economic portfolio was equivalent to a white economic portfolio who got prime loans. So, all of this racism in the banking system that's happening with these private banks who get bailout from us, now you tiptoeing on a public bank, you know, if they suffer a loss, this is economic strain, and we're going to have to bail them out, you sure, and then you bring up North Dakota, come on now, that is not right. We need public banking, and I would appreciate it if you was a stronger supporter of our money. We always say it's city's money, who's the city? That's the people's money. So, our money should be put into a public bank, and this public bank, all of these banks are private, is not going to, you know, what, some competition they're afraid of? Why wouldn't you strongly support public banking, say, whatever we need to do, we need to get into public banking, because it's public money that the private bankers are using. And so, I'm just disappointed in your response to public banking, and this is just a task force, you know, check, looking into it. I mean, I think the city, the mayor, yourself, should be a strong supporter of our money going to banks controlled by, supposed to be our government, so I'll say that with a quote, our, this government. You should be a strong supporter of that, not tiptoeing about it, and almost speaking as though you don't want it, because it might be a problem if we have losses. I'd like for you to comment to that, and then I have one last thing, and I'm finished.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Excuse me?
I said, thank you for your thoughts.
Well, I want to hear your thoughts on what I said. What do you mean, thank you for my thoughts?
Councilmember Barron, is there, what's the question?
Well, I, I want, my question is, what do you think about what I said? Not thanking me for my thoughts, what do you think about what I said in regard in public banking? I don't think it's strong enough on it, why aren't you, can you respond to my concerns other than thank you for your thoughts? That's an insult.
I'm sorry, I did not mean it that way.
Well, you did, but, because the time's running out, can you respond to what I said?
I heard what you said.
Well, I know you're not deaf, so I know you heard it, but can you respond?
I understand what your thoughts are, and I thank you.
That's ridiculous, but if that's where you stuck, I'm finished.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much, and I, I appreciate your testimony. I support the public banks, but I can see, I'm from North Dakota, so I have a sense of what some of those issues are, many, many cousins there. A couple of questions that I know are a little bit stretched, because I don't know this issue well. Banking Development District, would those be districts that are unbanked? Is that what it is?
Unbanked and underbanked, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so my question, when I was Borough President, we never could get a bank on Roosevelt Island. Is that, wow, I know this is a little bit of a stretch, but is that something that the Banking Commission deals with, or that's just anybody doesn't want to go there, and there's no bank, there's nothing we can do about it? We could not get a bank there?
Actually, we've been working, trying to do that for you, and, and we work with the state to develop different areas where there is unbanked and underbanked, and, and that is one of the places that we've been trying to find some.
Okay, so somebody, nobody's there. Now, the next question is, a place like Carver Bank, which I have to say during the pandemic helped people get money from the federal government, when, with all due respect, JP Morgan did not. So, Carver would be an example, they don't fit into your criteria, though, right, with city money. Can you explain why?
The state law, state law requires that they have a federal or a state charter, and Harbor Bank at this point is not part of that, and then they also didn't apply. So, I, I, the, the Banking Commission can't do anything if a bank doesn't apply.
Okay. So, they need to apply, but they also need to have the state or federal, too, designation?
Right. And, and I, I really would hope that Harbor Bank will try to become a Banking Development District.
Wonderful bank, I have to say.
I understand, we see the good work they're doing.
Okay, I will work on that.
Yes, please.
All right, now, this is another question that I should know the answer to, how do credit unions fit into any of this?
They don't because of the federal, because of the state laws that carve out who's eligible to hold public funds.
Credit unions?
And so, credit unions, because of their charters and because of how they're organized, at this point in time, they're not part of the depository banking.
And that's a good thing or a bad thing? Should that be changed in your, I mean, I know we're talking about public banks, but they do serve people extremely well?
Yes, but, but remember, a, a credit union's a cooperative.
Oh, I understand, I know, I belong to one.
And so, and because of that, there's, there's different structures and different things that they do.
Okay, I'm just trying to see how communities can get more support, but that's not one of them. And then, my other question is, the Banking Commission, is that something that is open, is under open meeting law?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, we, I, I'm very happy to tell you.
I should know these things, so go ahead.
No, no, it's, it's not, there's so many things you have to keep track of. The, actually, the Banking Commission just put on their website a mailbox for comments and testimony for the upcoming banking meetings, Banking Commission meetings, which will be held in May.
Okay, and then have there, you, I know that there was a women's bank years ago, but are there no other examples that you know of, except for North Dakota?
For the public bank, no.
Yes.
And, and for a woman's bank, the last one that I heard of was in Chicago.
Okay.
And, and the, the Chicago bank won't take deposits from anywhere else other than Chicago.
Okay.
So, so, you know, if you can work with, with getting a woman's bank, that would be great.
Okay, I'm just was trying to think of, you know, as many places as possible where public money can go, because that's what helps.
Understood.
Okay, and then, if there would be such a, a public bank, would you see it in addition to the banks that are private, or, I mean, obviously, we would like to see a public bank, but do you see that it could be alongside, at least initially, some of the private banks, or you think something, we'd have to switch completely, or do you not have an opinion?
I don't have a personal opinion.
Right.
But I can tell you that Seattle had wanted to go completely from the bank they were using to a public bank, and they were unable to do that, so they're actually trying to run parallel.
They're trying to do what, I'm sorry?
Do parallel.
Parallel, so that's something that we could think about, then. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Neglected to say, we were joined by Councilmember Farias. Councilmember Watt?
Thank you so much, Chair Brennan. I want to also publicly support my, my support for public banking, thank you for your testimony. For New York City, you stated that for Intro 999, that you are currently in conversation as the state legislation for the resolution that you're waiting for to authorize you, but obviously you expressed concerns. Do you have other suggestions, because it seems like there, it's going to at least take three years for a public bank, if passed, to come to fruition, on what you're going to do for mostly people of color and low-income communities that have no access to a financial agency at all, because they don't have credit scores? Right now, my district represents Queensbridge Houses, which has the largest amount of public housing residents in the whole entire country, and more than eighty percent of them have never had a bank account, and they are unable to open up a bank account, which is why they turn to credit unions, but that isn't always something that is going to allow them to start a business, or purchase a home. So, what is the Treasury doing for people of color and for low-income communities if public banking is not going to be an option in the near future?
Thank you for your question. The Treasury has specific duties and responsibilities that are already in our, our job descriptions, et cetera. So, while we're extremely supportive of the communities, we don't control a lot of that. That's decided by this wonderful group here. So... So, so our duties and responsibilities are right currently to protect the city's public funds that we have under our control at the moment. The Banking Development Program is a great program that we're investing in smaller banks that have been designated. And it's their job to work with the communities. There's also over eighty CDFIs in, in New York, many of them in New York City, that their, their task is to make sure that there's funds moving into those neighborhoods and, and helping the people who, who haven't been able to get a bank account somewhere.
I just want to put on the record that this legislative package is to pass public banking to help those very people, which you just told us that we're the ones in the way of public banking. So I hope the Treasury will continue to be in support as we hopefully can pass state legislation and city legislation in support of public banking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have the first panel from public testimony. The first panel will include Andy Morrison from the New Economy Project, Christopher Fasano, Ruth Lopez Martinez, and Michael or Meches Rosales Malpin. I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting. If you want to go right to left, whatever you want, begin when you're ready. No, I don't think it's on.
All right, thank you. So I'm Andy Morrison. Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the committee. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I work at New Economy Project. We're a economic justice organization that works with community groups to build a new economy that works for all, based on cooperation, neighborhood equity, social and racial justice, and ecological sustainability. We have a thirty-year track record working on financial justice and fair lending issues. And we think public banking will address deep-seated inequities in our financial system and economy that perpetuate poverty, segregation, and inequality across our city. And we're very pleased that the council is moving forward in this way toward a public bank and strongly support introductions 498, 499, and 999, and Resolution 203A, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers. I want to take some time on my testimony to just respond briefly to a couple of things that were raised by the Department of Finance. One, public banks, to Councilmember Brewer's point, would partner with community development financial institutions and small banks and local credit unions to strengthen our banking sector. That's the partnership model that public banks operate under. It's been very successful in North Dakota and other places around the world. So we see a huge opportunity to boost the work that responsible lenders are doing to serve historically redlined black and brown neighborhoods and other low-income communities that the banks are, that the big banks are not serving. Second, just want to point out that it's not analogous to compare the twenty-four million that North Dakota spends to, or that we spend to thirty-three million, whichever way it is. Because that kind of analysis ignores the broader social benefits that a public bank brings compared to the almost lack of any benefit we're getting from the current status quo system. And just to finish up, the point about there being a risk of a public bank not doing well during a recession, that's just the opposite. Public banks would partner with CDFIs. CDFIs did very well during the Great Recession. They actually succeeded, as did the Bank of North Dakota, which brought all sorts of benefits to North Dakota, which I'm happy to talk more about during the question and answer period. Thank you so much for the time and the opportunity to speak today.
Let me just ask, what do you think, what's the city afraid of with public banking?
What's the city afraid of? I think the biggest obstacle to public banking is the banking lobby, is the powerful Wall Street interests that stand to lose from public banking. I think that's the primary obstacle. I think most of the objections to public banking tend to be in bad faith. And that, that said, you have to study it. You have to take it very seriously. We don't want, we, we don't want to not do, do our due diligence. And that's why we've taken such care to work with Councilmember Powers and at the state level, Senator James Sanders, on crafting legislation that would ensure real accountability, transparency, and broadly shared public benefit.
So good afternoon, Chair Brennan, members of the committee. I'm Christopher Fasano, a staff attorney with Mobilization for Justice and a member of the Legal Services Staff Association Local 2320, which is a unit in UAW Region 9A. And each of these organizations are strong supporters of public banking. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Intros 498, 499, 999, Resolution 203A, which we believe will shine a light on the city's finances and also lay the groundwork for a municipal public bank. Mobilization for Justice is a nonprofit legal service provider that provides free legal assistance to more than fourteen thousand New Yorkers each year, benefiting over twenty-four thousand New Yorkers. That puts us at the front line of the affordable housing crisis, where we represent tenants facing eviction and homeowners facing foreclosure. And when city residents are denied credit and other basic financial services, they come to mobilization and take out predatory loans. They come to Mobilization for Justice for assistance. A public bank promises to provide the lending that private banks cannot and to build permanently affordable housing, originate and refinance affordable home loans, and provide credit to historically redlined communities that commercial banks have long ignored. I work in our foreclosure prevention project. And so I want to briefly note that my clients had struggled to refinance their mortgages during the pandemic when interest rates were historically low. And what we learned was that the commercial banks were discriminating against black homeowners. But it was not just banks like Wells Fargo, which the city cut its ties with last year. Every bank was discriminating against black homeowners and other homeowners of color. Discrimatory lending is unacceptable. And there's no reason, if the city cut its ties with Wells Fargo, no reason for it to continue to bank with these other discriminatory, other lenders that are gauging discriminatory practices. And just want to briefly address one other comment that was made earlier about how the, if we were to create a public bank, it would pose risk to the city. The Bank of North Dakota recorded a profit every year, including during the financial downturn 2007 through 2009, in 2020 as well. And they're a counter cyclical lender, meaning that they increase lending to their communities. And we saw this in 2020 because the Bank of North Dakota was able to issue more PPP loans per capita than any other state. It is a fiscally responsible institution. It is desperately needed. And it will help New Yorkers in the event of a future economic downturn, much like the Bank of North Dakota did. Thank you for your time.
Buenas tardes. Mi testimonio es en español. Mi nombre es Ruth Lopez Martinez. Soy una dueña trabajadora de la cooperativa Pallante Green Clings. Y soy una miembro del Consejo de Abogacía de Nidnok, la red de cooperativas de la ciudad de Nueva York. Pertenezco al movimiento cooperativo desde el año 2010. Y creo que es una, una forma de mejorar la economía de la ciudad de Nueva York y en general de todo el país. Las, las cooperativas surgieron como una forma de mejorar la economía y de darle muchas más oportunidades de trabajo a las personas latinas, a los negros latinos y a los negros no latinos que tienen muy pocas oportunidades de trabajos en este país. Esto surgió como una, una gran oportunidad de mejorar nuestros trabajos. Y hoy en día tenemos una opción de más o menos un promedio entre dieciocho a veinticinco pesos la hora en un tipo de trabajo no tradicional porque no es tradicional las cooperativas. Estamos fuera del enfoque de los negocios tradicionales donde hay un dueño y unos trabajadores. Sin embargo, las, las cooperativas con la pandemia sufrimos un gran, un gran declive económico porque realmente perdimos clientes que no, no tuvieron oportunidad de crecer o de quedarse con la pandemia. Muchas perdimos nuestros sitios de trabajo, nuestros locales. Y intentamos con los bancos tradicionales conseguir préstamos para poder surgir y algunas para no morir en, en, en este, en esto. Entonces, así como surgió la idea del banco público y el apoyo que queremos nosotros con nuestro banco público para que puedan realmente apoyar a las cooperativas y conseguir préstamos sin tanto papeleo que nos ofrecen las otras, los bancos tradicionales y con unos intereses que podamos tener acceso los cooperativistas y poder surgir de nuevo en la economía de este país que es tan necesario.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the committee. My name is Meches Rosales Mopin. And I am with the Carol Garden Nanny Association, or Carol Garden Association. And I'm here because we support the public banking. And we want this bill to pass. And I want to like, I don't know, to ask you to be in our side of the history. And we change history and let's do this. We can do it. Also because in Carol Garden, we organize domestic workers, you know, the nannies and the home care workers and the, the house cleaners. They help the New York City to run. Because when we stay at home with your kids or with your elders, you can come to work. And that's why it's so important for us to have this bill pass, all these bills pass. And also because, you know, domestic workers are in the low income. And a lot of them are immigrants. That we have the right to have banking. And then creating this public banking, we will have more. And that will help us so much to like contribute to the city better. And we are here and we want to be part of the city. And we want to, to support the city and to continue building New York the way that we are. We are the, to create the American dream for everyone. And the domestic workers help so much to the, to the rest of the New Yorkers to create that American dream. Why we don't support them, to them have the right to have the American dream too. Let's do it. Because we are, we are the essential workers to, we provide so much help to, to New York and to all the, you know, we are, as a nanny, we are helping to raise the new generations. And then we, we should have the more, the right to have the public banking and have more resources. Low-income domestic workers, they cannot have, they cannot buy houses because there's no banking and stuff like that. And then, thank you. Please, let's change history. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Oh, wait, question from Councilmember Powers.
Thank you guys for the testimony. Just a couple, I just had a couple quick questions. And thank you for some of your responses to the previous testimony. One of the, you know, possibilities here is obviously to create a public bank that exists adjacent to the private banks here. And I think that's what many of us are talking about. Can you just expand a little bit on what the benefits are for creating an adjacent, you know, public bank? And where there are opportunities to fill in the gaps right now in New York City? If you were to be able to pass state legislation, and we passed ours, and we were able to create a public bank?
Thanks for the question. So I think as you're hearing from some of the testimony on this panel, there are just, there are just profound inequities in banking across the city, where particularly black and brown communities don't have access to bank branch services, responsible loans, and other like wealth-building opportunities. And that actually plays out in this burgeoning, community-controlled development movement that's taking root across the city, where we have group, New Yorkers coming together to build community land trust, to create worker-owned businesses, and so much more. And I think a continual barrier that those New Yorkers face is lack of access to fair and affordable financing. So we really see a huge opportunity in public banking to catalyze community-led economic development that will strengthen local economies, build community wealth, and address racial inequities. So we're, we think it's like a no-brainer in that regard.
Thanks. Just another question. We hear a lot about the North Dakota example, and we know some of the successes that you mentioned around that as well. But I also hear the critics from, who say often, there's one example basically to pull from in North Dakota. And I like North Dakota, Councilmember Brewer, but others seem to say it in a way that it feels like they're putting down North Dakota. But I guess.
North Dakota, not North Dakota.
But what are, where are we in other places in terms of establishing this? What examples can we pull from either in the, in the US or around the world? And places if we were to set up a task force or, you know, pass legislation to start this process? Where would we be looking for inspiration and guidance? And what, how do we respond to that sort of criticism around? What the, like, few examples locally?
Yeah, sure. I think there's going to be someone who's an expert in this, who's going to be testifying later on public banks. There are hundreds of public banks around the world. So I think we can let Dr. Marwa speak to some of that later, but I'll pass it to Chris Tuttuck to answer that.
And just the brief takeaway is really everywhere. I mean, there are over nine hundred public banks all throughout the world with one hundred, with forty-nine trillion dollars in assets. So there are public banks in places diverse as Costa Rica and Germany. Germany is a very robust system of public banks called the Sparkhausen Banks, which do extraordinary jobs supporting small and medium-sized businesses. Did very well during the downturn, economic, global economic downturn 2009. But domestically, other states are moving forward with public banking. In 2019, California passed a bill similar to the one that we're pursuing in Albany that would allow counties municipalities to create public banks. And there are groups in, for example, the East Bay and LA and elsewhere that are beginning to put together these materials, as we are, to create public banks. So it's not just North Dakota. There's plenty of international models and other states and cities that are working on this as well.
Got it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. And we heard from the Department of Finance about Seattle. Do you have any more information about that? Where they are doing, I don't know what you would call it, concurrent banking?
I didn't quite understand that point, but we can, we can look into it and get back to you.
What she said was that apparently, again, I only know what I heard, is that the city has decided not to have just public bank, but to do a concurrent. Now, maybe it would be time or sunsetted? I don't know. I just want to know if you, I mean, it's a different model.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, we, we imagine a public bank here could coexist with other depository institutions too. Like, the city has billions of dollars in cash on hand and more than enough to sustain a public bank. And some of the community banks that are doing good work and serving communities could also hold deposits at the same time as a public bank.
So you're looking at the same kind of model then, depending on how it's structured?
Again, I don't understand exactly what, the point that was made, and I'm not familiar enough with what's going on right now in Seattle. We can look into that more and get back to you. But generally, I don't think we imagine just snapping our fingers and taking all of the city's cash and putting it in a public bank. We're talking about phasing something in, but we also want to be bold because the, the more, the bolder we are at the outset, the faster the bank can grow and the more New Yorkers it can serve.
And then you mentioned credit unions. I'm a big supporter of credit unions. But obviously, I guess it'd have to be a different structure for them to accept public money. Do you know how you would?
The credit unions right now are not allowed, they're not authorized to hold public deposits by the state. But I will just, just want to let you know, we're big supporters of community development credit unions. Community development credit unions are part of the public banking coalition in New York City. And they see huge opportunity to partner with the public bank so that they can do more work in particularly historically redlined communities. So a member of a credit union, the Lower East Side People's Federal Credit Union, is going to testify later today, more on that point.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, the next panel, we have Edison Tan, Kyle Giller, Damian Andrade. Okay, the next panel, we have Edison Tan, Kyle Giller, Damian Andrade, Judy Leidicker, and Joyce Rabitz. Okay, so just say your name and then start your testimony. Do you want to go left from right this time? Technically, we'll start with it.
Hi, my name is Edison Tan. I'm a student at City College and also a part of their NiPerc chapter. Like many young people and students, climate change is a very important issue for me. Every year, as the climate crisis grows exponentially worse, leading to more record heat waves, droughts, and flooding, the latter of which was especially true for my borough of Queens a few years ago, late 2021, as when Hurricane Ida arrived. The New York metro area, as you guys know, was devastated. New York State reported 18 deaths after the storm, and 11 of those came from Queens alone, especially in those neighborhoods with lower, who were more vulnerable, low-income, such as Woodside, Elmhurst, and Jackson Heights, along with many other neighborhoods since many people's basement homes flooded. As climate change continues to get worse, we need to urgent action on both the local and federal level to drastically reduce carbon emissions and quickly develop green energy solutions. A big issue and striking issue is Wall Street banks for our green economy. From 2016 to 2020, Chase Bank invested $317 billion into oil and gas companies, and in total, five of the largest investors of Wall Street have collectively invested over a trillion in the fossil fuel industry over the same time period. So in point, not only are Wall Street banks failing to invest in renewable energy, they are also using our public dollars to invest in fossil fuels and just exacerbating this climate crisis. So instead of depositing our public money into Wall Street, we certainly need a public bank that will let us finally get serious about investing in climate justice. By divesting our tax dollars from Wall Street banks, we kind of send a clear message that gone are the days where we will use our funds to exacerbate the climate crisis. Instead, we can redirect our money into developing green infrastructure, renewable energy projects such as community-owned solar panels, as mentioned before, and also building resilience against future storms, which would definitely benefit places like in Queens that were absolutely devastated during Hurricane Ida. And in addition to building infrastructure, this will ensure that New York meets our ambitious climate goals and starts to seriously cut carbon emissions in our state. So I urge the council to pass Intro 498, 499, 999, and Resolution 203 to finally help bring a public bank to New York. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Damian Andrade, and I'm also a part of NiPerc and a student at Brooklyn College. Like many other young people and students, you know, climate change is a very important issue for me, and every year, the climate crisis just constantly keeps getting worse and worse. As my colleague says, you know, from 2016 to 2020, you know, Chase Bank alone invested like $317 billion into oil and gas companies, which the top five Wall Street banks collectively invested $1 trillion into the fossil fuels over the same four period alone. And not only Wall Street banks are failing to invest in renewable energies, they're also using our public dollars to invest the fossil fuels and exacerbating the climate crisis. I live in a low-income neighborhood called Sunset Park in Brooklyn. During every time when we have storms, lots of my neighborhoods get flooded during overflooded sewers because a lot of our infrastructure in Sunset Park lacks the, like, what it needs to be repaired ASAP. Like Hurricane Sandy left my neighborhood in destruction near the pier, same thing with Ida. Instead of like investing public money into Wall Street banks, we could definitely invest that into a public bank to make sure that our public money is getting put into the community needs. And definitely it's very important to me, so I could definitely see real change in my community other than seeing our public money getting put into the Wall Street sector, and they're not even investing in public goods. They're just making them look better, making them for profit, which will, you know, bring community solar panels into Sunset Park, also build resilience against future storms. This would just let New York to finally continue going into a green economy, you know, lead the nation to become a green-friendly New York state. I just urge the council to keep on supporting 498, 499, and 999, and Resolution 203 to help bring a public bank to New York. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kyle Giller. I'm a staff attorney with the New York Public Interest Research Group, and it's a privilege to be here with very motivated college students who are very passionate about this issue. So I thank them for coming here. And, you know, they've laid out some of the facts just about currently the banks that we do have deposits with and the billions and billions and really trillions of dollars that these banks have invested in oil and gas companies over the last few years. I would just say, you know, New York State has very ambitious goals for mitigating climate emissions over the next few years. The CLCPA mandates that we really bring emissions down really fast, and a public bank is really one of the ways that we can achieve those goals, in particular, using it to help buildings upgrade their infrastructure to get in compliance with Local Law 97. It's a way to really jumpstart some of the funding for that and really start to bring down building emissions quickly as we need to. In particular, so the bills that are in front of us today, 498, 499, 999, and Resolution 203 are critical first steps toward laying the foundation for a public bank by bringing much-needed transparency and accountability to our current financial relationships with our designated banks, also laying out an implementation plan for actually establishing a municipal bank, and of course, you know, sending an official message to the state legislature that we're ready to pass the New York Public Banking Act. So, yeah, you know, we're here in support of these bills today, and I thank you for the council's time.
Hello, Chair Brandon and members of the committee. I'm Jody Leidicker, and I work at Cooper Square Committee. And, you know, I have my own personal relationship to banks in New York City. I lived in a building that had brown water, mold, roaches. I almost drank a roach one time when it got into my glass, so I reached out to the bank and the bank did nothing. They basically turned a blind eye to what was happening to me and my neighbors. So I know intimately the role that banks play in New York City. As an organizer at Cooper Square Committee, you know, we work with a coalition that was formerly known as Tolu Dono Tenants Coalition, now it's known as Tenants Taking Control. And in, I think, 2015, their landlord bought this portfolio of buildings and proceeded on a campaign so outrageous that he is now permanently banned from real estate. You probably know who I'm referring to. So that landlord was funded by Madison Realty Capital with a collateralized loan from Signature Bank. So you can imagine how the tenants felt when they found out that their own tax dollars are being held by a bank that essentially is funding displacement, chaos, and misery in their lives. So, you know, the tenants of Tenants Taking Control, Cooper Square Committee, we really support this People's Bank Act because we know that when people have ownership, when they have stability in their lives, it has a ripple effect across the whole city, the whole state, right? When people feel invested in their communities, when they're not facing constant displacement pressure or campaigns of harassment. So we urge you to pass these bills in support of the Public Banking Act. Thank you.
My name is Joyce Rabitz. I'm the chairperson of the Cooper Square Committee. We've, we're on the Lower East Side helping tenants for over 64 years. I can't get my glasses to work. I'm here to tell you how a New York City public bank will benefit New Yorkers and New York. First, what's wrong with the private banks? Cooper Square Committee has frequently seen private banks fund companies that treat New York tenants terribly. Private banks lend money to landlords who show a substantial profit. When a bank backs a landlord, they don't care what the landlord does except that they want him to earn, they want to get their profit. So landlords harass tenants, they could fail to give heat, electricity, or other, or give them other things that would make their lives more livable. A private bank still collects its money. Private banks rarely supervise how their money is used as long as they get a profit. This is bad for New Yorkers and for New York businesses. Public banks invest in economic development to build New York and for New Yorkers, not to extract wealth from them. The public banks are obligated to serve in the public interest. The benefits for public banks for New Yorkers extend far beyond landlord-tenant relations. Financial justice: public banks offer responsible banking and lending services to historically redlined communities. Climate justice: public banks offer responsible banking. Worker justice: they help businesses and they give economic opportunities that give a living wage. And housing justice: I spoke about that already. Public banks do not have to make a profit, but if they do, that profit goes back to New York City, and that's good for New York. You have before you the chance to let New York City have a public bank. As New York City elected officials, you, like public banks, are obligated to work for the good of the people, the good of New York. Please allow New Yorkers to establish a New York City public bank soon. Thank you.
Joined by Councilmember Velazquez. We have questions? Okay, thank you all so much. Next, we have Logan Needle.
Just want to start by thanking Chairman Brandon and the rest of the Committee on Finance for allowing me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Logan Needle. I'm a senior campaign lead for the Communications Workers of America, District One. Our district represents workers in the private and public sectors who work in telecommunications, news media, broadcast and cable television, education, healthcare, and public service, among many others. CWA also represents thousands of bank workers. These members are employed by a variety of banks and financial institutions, including credit unions, mortgage companies, and life insurance companies. In addition, CWA is a founding member of the Take On Wall Street campaign, a coalition of more than 50 community organizations, labor unions, consumer activists, and faith groups who share the goal of building a financial system that works for everyone. The coalition fights for legislation that will rein in Wall Street's predatory power and bring long overdue transparency to the financial sector. Lastly, CWA members are community members and consumers who are directly and personally impacted by our financial system. So that's why I'm here today in support of public banking and the four following relevant pieces of legislation. Intros 498 and 499 will bring much-needed transparency to New York's financial relationships with commercial banks, a necessary step towards accountability. Resolution 203 urges the state to pass the New York Public Banking Act, currently being considered by the New York State Legislature, which creates a safe and appropriate regulatory framework for the establishment of local public banks, created by cities and counties and accountable to the public. And lastly, Intro 999 requires the city to create a plan for a municipal public bank. CWA is in strong support of all four pieces of legislation. Public banking is a well-established model throughout the world and represents an alternative to predatory Wall Street banks, serving as a powerful tool for local governments to invest in permanently affordable housing, living wage jobs, renewable energy, community-led development, and more. Local public banks strengthen New York's banking sector and local economies, advancing racial and economic justice. They partner rather than compete with local banks and credit unions to drive responsible lending and expand affordable financial services in historically redlined neighborhoods. New Yorkers deserve an alternative to Wall Street. Just recently, we saw two of the three biggest bank failures in recent history, Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank, and taxpayers were on the hook for $22 billion of public bailout money. It also recently came to light that the city had $60 million of our public money on deposit with Signature Bank when it collapsed. So New Yorkers deserve better, but what are our options? Last year, the city cut ties with Wells Fargo after the bank was repeatedly exposed for lending discrimination. JP Morgan Chase, the bank with the most city deposits, is the world's largest bank financier of fossil fuels, and as has been well established, many of the banks with which the city does business routinely redline and otherwise exploit working New Yorkers. This year, the city of New York will collect more than $100 billion in revenue from taxes and other sources to fund public services. Currently, this money is placed on deposit with these large commercial banks that systematically harm New Yorkers and finance fossil fuels, gun manufacturers, speculative real estate, and other destructive industries. Public banking offers a bold alternative, and we urge the city council to take immediate steps toward a more equitable, just, and fair economy that works for and is accountable to New Yorkers. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much, Logan.
Thank you.
Okay, our next panel is on Zoom. Gregory Jost, Judith Hertzberg, Linda Levy, and Thomas Marwa or Maros.
You may begin.
Okay, I'll start first because I think I got my video on for anybody else, dude. I'm Linda Levy. I'm from the Lower East Side People's Federal Credit Union. Thank you so much, Chairman Brandon and members of the committee, for allowing us to testify today. I have lots and lots of things I could tell you about public banking and why we think it's a good idea, but the main thing I'd like to talk about is why my credit union feels that this is such an important issue for us and why we have been working for over seven years to try to get a public bank in New York City. The Lower East Side People's Federal Credit Union is a community development financial institution, which is a CDFI, that has been serving low-income immigrant New Yorkers since 1986. We have branches on the Lower East Side and East Harlem in Manhattan and on the North Shore of Staten Island. We are also currently serving the Bronx with our mobile banking branch and plan to open a fiscal branch in the Bronx in early 2024. In addition to the people who live or work right near our branches, any low-income resident of the city of New York is eligible for membership in our credit union. Currently, 90% of our members are low-income and 65% are Latinx. At $90 million in assets, we are the largest community development credit union in New York City, yet clearly it's a very small financial institution. We have been working with the Coalition Public Bank NYC for over seven years to establish a public bank that will increase our capacity to serve more New Yorkers. A public bank will help us build our credit union and other CDFIs like ours through capital investments and participation lending. As a financial institution with deep roots in our communities and a successful track record of serving the unbanked, we will work in partnership with a public bank to bring more financial services, affordable housing, and community investment throughout the city. I cannot stress to you how important it is to, sorry, how important it is to us to see a public bank in New York City. I also would like to mention that when the Department of Finance was testifying and stated that there was a large series of issues that need...
Thank you so much, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Gregory Jost.
I must begin.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thanks so much for having me. I am an adjunct professor at Fordham University, and I'm also a consultant with Banana Kelly Community Improvement Association in the South Bronx. We're partnering with Linda and the team at Lower East Side People's Federal Credit Union to bring the credit union to the Bronx because our neighborhoods have been collectively failed, I should say, have been failed collectively by the banking industry. You can look over many generations, decades, the fires, the redlining that has happened, the way that we have a proliferation of fringe financial services in our neighborhoods. We look to partner locally with institutions like Linda's, like the credit union, other small community banks in a way that a public bank for New York City would actually support and help grow and invest in these types of models. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I need to say too much more. I will just add that the regulatory system out there, we cannot put our entire faith in them. They do not have all the tools that they need to ensure that the banks are serving our communities properly. They have imperfect tools that they, that only exist because community residents organized and demanded them back, going back into the 1970s and in subsequent decades. So if you're not listening to communities, we would have virtually no tools to make sure that our money works for us in any kind of way in, in our neighborhoods. And I, if you're not sure, you can come and meet, and I know a lot of you on the city council are partnering with us already. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your support. I just want to let you know, we all think this is a great idea. And if there's extra time, I'll give it to Linda.
Thank you. Now we have Judith Hertzberg.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Brandon and members of the committee. My name is Judith Hertzberg. I'm with True Blue New York. I am also a retired money-centered banking executive, having worked for many years in credit, lending, and in all aspects of risk management. And given recent events, I cannot stress the importance of proper risk management. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of Introductions 498, 499, and 999, and the Resolution 203A collectively called the People's Bank Act. These measures promote vital public transparency about the city's finances and financial relationships and lay the foundation for a municipal public bank. A little bit about True Blue New York. True Blue New York is a grassroots organization founded to defeat the IDC, elect Democrats to the New York State Senate, and advocate for the passage of much-needed voting reform and good government reform legislation. We continue to advocate for such reforms, as well as the passage of progressive legislation to support a wide variety of economic and social justice reforms that a public bank would support. A public bank is what its name suggests, a financial institution created by a government and chartered to serve the public interest. Through public banking, the city can invest in permanently affordable housing, community solar and other cooperative and community-led wealth-building initiatives. Public banks partner rather than compete with local community development financial institutions, CDFIs, and other responsible lenders to expand fair and affordable financial services in historically redlined community. Where we put our public dollars is a fundamental matter of public concern. This year, the city of New York will collect more than $100 billion in revenue from taxes and other sources to fund public services. Currently, this money is placed on deposit with large commercial banks that systematically harm New Yorkers and finance fossil fuels, gun manufacturers, speculative real estate, and other destructive industries.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Thank you again for your attention. And I urge the passage of Introductions 498, 99, and 999, and Resolution 203.
Thank you, Judith. Now we have Thomas Marois.
Time has begun.
Thank you very much. My name is Thomas Marois. I'm a reader or professor in Soles University of London, in London, England. I'm here to present on some evidence of public banks. I'm one of the world-leading scholars on public banks, and I just want to suggest that the material I present to you next minute or so is verifiable. I can share any of the peer-reviewed publications on which it's based, but the evidence is out there in terms of the, the benefits and potentialities for public banks. The first thing I want to mention is that public banks are anything but niche. The question was raised earlier, are they elsewhere in the world? And it was mentioned earlier, there are more than 900 around the world. They have over $49 trillion in assets. That's 20% of all banking assets. So 1 in 5 dollars in banks today are public, in public banks. To put that in context, that is the, you know, larger than the GDPs of the United States, Germany, and China combined, sitting within existing public banks. They exist at all levels, at the city level, state level, national level, and international level. In fact, the very first public bank was a city-level public bank in Barcelona created in 1401. So there is nothing new about public banks. They've been around hundreds of years. There are many ways of governing public banks. You can have boards that include central authorities and local authorities. They have, there are public banks with sectoral or business representatives and community representatives sitting on the boards of governors. And then there are boards that mix that, local authorities, expertise, sectoral representation, and so on. At the same time, they build in and can build in racial and gender equity safeguards and mechanisms of accountability that are binding the bank by law to respond to social, social priorities of the community. They are institutionally stable. Their, most public banks have been around for decades, some as long as 150 years.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired.
Thank you. Let me finish just by saying then that there is an opportunity here to create a public bank as a legacy institution, as a gift to the future that can enable public policy.
Thank you. Okay, thanks to everyone who testified today. With that, this hearing is adjourned.